The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to clarify.
I would like to move to accept tonight's agenda for September 14th, 2020, if I may have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes? Any opposed? So carried. We're going to open tonight with our work session discussion with Policy Review Committee. Ann Or, take it away.
Okay, we reviewed and accepted for second read the leave of absence, which covered the change of hours of leave of absence for voting from four hours to two hours, and some new language in the patriotism, citizenship, and human rights education to ensure that we cover religious freedom, et cetera. And then the others are all accepted as is. There were no edits from the existing reviews which had done in the previous four years. We are deleting 7150, which is really about the involuntary transfer of students, and that involves special ed. So that'll be covered there because it's going to be replaced with two, three new policies. Although I suppose they're revisions, but they're new. That focus on the circumstances of COVID-19. Defines extraordinary circumstances, defines remote working. So that would be for the staff and teachers. And remote learning, which would be for the students. So those policies are there. They came from Bosse's and seem very comprehensive. The other second, first reads are around student progress, and we're actually going to take a closer look at what the circumstances are around acceleration and well, everything, acceleration and lack thereof shows in. And that's where the policy committee sits right now.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Cusari, school opening update.
Well, I want to bring Dr. Grupka and Dr. Lyon into the conversation. You've obviously, you know, read my material and know that school opened last week. I thought relatively well. We had a few, as you saw in my email, a few glitches with transportation. But we're able to work all of that out, I think, pretty quick. And so far, so good with regard to those students that are with us on campus. I think we've got that narrowed down. The drop off and pickup at buildings is, you know, after a first day which was confusing, particularly at the elementary level, seemed to, you know, go real well on the second two days. So I think that's just going to continue to grow. And they continue to kind of hone and develop that, the administrators at each of the buildings. So seems to be going well. Today was obviously a big day, the first full day of, the first week of, you know, the heart and soul of the work. And so we did have the bit of a glitch with Google, although it didn't seem to impact as many as I had originally thought. People were finding a way around it. It was working on some devices, wasn't working on some other devices. There were some browsers that, like, for instance, I was able to get to Google on Chrome, but I was able to get to Google and I was actually working straight through all of that on Microsoft Explorer. So it was very weird. We did not hear of massive issues today, both at the elementary and secondary level. I debriefed with all the building principals and got, you know, a fairly good debrief from them. Mr. Hill and Dr. Lyon said that they thought that went well. I did speak with the teachers' union, and I also heard fairly good things there as well. So people seem to be working through it. Everybody seemed to be prepared for it, and there was minus some technology glitches, individual family technology glitches. There were, all students were engaged in the virtual learning model today. So that's good. Today was also the first day of the 100% remote model. And in terms of, you know, getting down into work, digging into the classes, and understanding the schedule. Looks a little different at the elementary level than the secondary level. Dr. Lyon's going to talk just a little bit about that. But by and large, that seems to be going relatively well. It's still very new to people, I'm sure. So, you know, they're still trying to figure it out and working with their liaisons. And so we'll have to see how that starts to play out. But overall, I thought that went pretty good. I'm going to let Dr. Lyon just talk a little bit about more of the detail of both where we're kind of at with the hybrid and the 100% remote. Some things that we are, that are going well, some things that we've uncovered, some areas that we're looking to continue to expand on with both of those models. So if you just want to talk about the teaching and learning piece, Dr. Lyon?
Sure. So we find out something new related to this hybrid model just about every day. And that makes sense in light of the fact that we've never done this before. So for example, today I found out at the secondary level that in ATEC there are some resources that are not provided for ATEC that we have to provide, for example, copies of books. Most books these days are available electronically. Or some of these books we might already have within our own book closet so that we can provide to students with those. There are handful of things that we ATEC can purchase, but I have money available within textbooks and things like that to cover it. The challenge is that I didn't know about it until today. We also have some questions for some families about, do I really have to join in every day? And what happens if I don't join in every day? So those are the types of troubleshooting things that we're working on right now. But the reality is that the teachers and the liaisons, I use teachers to talk about K to five because they're providing instruction, and liaisons six, four, five, because it really serves, serving as not the direct instruction provider, but the person who is checking in on social emotional wellness, doing circles with kids. The secondary liaisons related to special education are providing study skills, data, whatnot. Anyway, the, they are a PLC already. Like, everything that they have done on campus leading up to having to work in this capacity is manifesting in very natural ways, spontaneously almost by them. So even though we don't ask them to like, hey, make sure that you connect with each other to see where you are, they're naturally inclined to do that because of the culture of our district, and that speaks volumes, right? It's not, what do you do when you're told to do, but what do you do when you have choices? Because it hasn't yet been set, and they're just getting to that in front of even us, saying, it's been really beautiful. At the elementary level, as I shared with you, we initially purchased education.com thinking it was a little bit like a junior, if you will, in that the work that our teachers would have to do would be to assign assignments and look over those assignments, but not necessarily provide the instruction because we thought the instruction would be embedded within that. We realized that that's not necessarily the case. And so within a very short period of time, not even a day's turnaround, we had, we troubled, we were troubleshooting that and had solutions. So now K one and two, we guys want a teacher for grade level. They're meeting daily with students to provide instruction for an hour, and then the students are doing their work independently, as independently as you can, or as senior, first grader type, they are can. And then at the IEC, they have approached it in a departmental way. So that really all students are interacting with all three of those teachers. And each of those teachers is tapped in on contact area, ELS, math. And then we have one person doing science and social studies because our students get basically half a year. We've talked about this at the four level before, that science and social studies at the elementary level is really like a half-year course. So anyway, that's going very well. But so far, today, for the first day, we have the students, the open houses that we had for the virtual students went really well. They were well attended, people had their questions answered if they still had any, and there was really positive feedback. And then for our, those who are on campus, you know, again, last week we got great feedback about how pleased they were with how things went. And I really believe that there are three components that went into that going as well as it did. I believe that that had to do with our planning that we did around reopening. I think it had to do with our relationships and the communication that we had with people who were involved, from the teachers and their 10 hours of planning to the band forms and so forth. And I think that third component is perspective. And so people are looking at other districts and feeling like, oh, they're not other districts. And so for our teachers, we have already started with professional development, and professional development has been happening. We are not calling teachers for that. And so like Melanie Kitchen, who is our tech integrator from Bosse's, she is offering after-school opportunities that teachers are participating in. And so it's really six of one and half a dozen of the other, right? Are we going to pay a sub to be in the classroom depth? This is the normal train of thought, do we pay a sub or do we pay the teacher to do that work? And typically speaking, we pay the sub because then that would be a captive audience. We can guarantee that the teachers will get that information. Now we're paying folks to do it after hours, and we can't guarantee a captive audience. But what I have seen time and time again in this district is that teachers are asked to be education.
So a question came up, Dr. Lyon, and I just wanted you to address it. I addressed it a little bit. So there's some concern, at least concern, or there's some discussion happening with some families in the 100% remote with regard to pacing. And this notion that they're recognizing already that, you know, they can get quite a bit ahead and perhaps even take a second grade level this year. So what are your thoughts on there? I know that we have discussed this, and one of the key roles of the liaisons is to try to facilitate the pacing.
Well, what I have said to the liaisons, because they are getting those questions directly, is that it is always our goal to differentiate from kids, right? And so regardless of where they're doing their learning, we want to make sure that we meet their needs. But at this point, even though ATEC can do that, I'm not sure that we have enough information yet about what that looks like, the sounds like in practice, to be able to decide how fast a kid can or should go.
This is, I think, just parents taking an initial look at it and saying, oh, this is kind of maybe some families licking their chops a little bit, saying, oh, this is a great chance for us to really get ahead.
Right, but it's a little bit kind of like a buffet, just because everything is out there and it all looks good.
And they haven't got, and they haven't dug into the devil, the detail, which is there is more significant work than perhaps is. And we, as I mentioned, particularly at the middle school level, there are going to be other programmatic pieces coming online, like some of the special areas, facts and technology that are currently, that we're working on developing and adding those to those middle school programs, correct?
That is correct. The other thing with ATEC is we have to remember that our students are going to come back to campus. And so we have to be able to meet their needs when they come back to campus. So if a student finishes essentially two math courses in a year, two English courses in a year or something like that, where does that leave them when they come back? And so we need to think about short and long-term planning with both of these things. And we never had to think about that with as many.
Right, does a seventh grade, does a seventh grade student come back who is so inclined and they're going to ninth grade English? And ninth grade social studies, you know?
Right. So we do have students who are accelerated right now. So I was just working today, there are two fifth grade students who will be taking sixth grade math in ATEC. So they're remote students who are doing the departmentalization with their team. And then, but for math, they're not joining their math with their.
Fifth graders.
IEC fifth grade team. They are going to be in ATEC for sixth grade math.
Right.
So we're already working.
We're trying to, we're trying to be accommodating.
Yeah.
But we don't want people to take advantage and not lose sight of the fact that it's not a race. And that this, that the courses, A, once I think people get into, they're going to recognize that it's not as easy as it looks. Number one. Number two, that you also have to recognize what's educationally appropriate for your child and what's socially appropriate for your child. And really, what's the end goal, you know? What's the end goal? Because are you looking, if you're looking to have your child graduate from school as a junior, that's, and that's a commitment you're interested in making, which we do have one, two, three families every year make that choice. It would be important to have that conversation with us. But ultimately, the 100% remote model is a stopgap measure in the middle of a pandemic to support those families. It's not a be-all, end-all replacement of school.
Correct, and that is why I.
The be-all, end-all replacement, right. The be-all, end-all replacement of school is homeschooling.
Yes.
You know?
Right. So if the child accelerates so much, when they come back to campus, what does that mean for them? Or if they decide not to come back to campus and we no longer have these opportunities, then what position will this child be in?
I do want you to kind of make sure that you're keeping a watchful eye on that because we, the consistent message needs to come from you. Oftentimes, building principles maybe interpret that a little differently than others. And so, right, we need to have a consistent message on that, and I need you to have that, to be that consistent messager on that. Because we want to hear people out, you know? And I want to understand what their end goal is for their child's education. Not that we, we are one of, we, as a district, we already work significantly with families. Particularly in acceleration, you know, there's a lot of districts that they just will say to a family, no, that's not what we do, you know? Your not, child's not moving ahead, that's not how it works. We've never done that. Well, actually, we did have a superintendent that did that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If, if we ended up bringing all the students back to campus.
Right.
And there was a child that had accelerated and moved forward, but that child was supposed to come back to campus. Do they still have access to the online remote learning?
We have said that, yes, for the, for those students that it's working for, and there are going to, even if we, unless, there are going to be, I don't know how the state's going to play that out.
If the school were to open, would it be, we don't know.
We don't know if it's a requirement for, are people still going to be allowed to have the option? If the state says to me, you can open up and bring everybody back.
What if the state mandates you open up? So it's time.
They, well, then, then.
Do all students come back?
They would have to, yeah, if that's what the state, if there's no longer that option. Currently, right now, under executive order, there's that option for families.
If ATEC program would then shut down?
Correct.
So we could use that for credit recovery, which is what we initially hoped for. So that's, Charlotte, your point is well made in that that is part of the reason why pacing, our liaisons are pacing the students in there. Because we are a little lead that at some point they're going to come back to campus. And we want to be able to integrate the students back to campus as smoothly as possible. And so that is why the, we are working with the teachers on campus to understand what's being taught on campus and align with the same talk in ATEC to parallel that to every extent possible.
So one way or the other, if everybody needs to end up going on remote and they want to join.
That's correct.
An actual teacher, instead of using ATEC, they can easily slide right back into the classroom.
That said, it is not always as seamless or a beautiful one-to-one match as possible. So for example, our sophomores are required to take CFM, right? Their finance, what's the.
Career and financial, man.
Yeah, thank you. And so there is obviously not a course in ATEC with that exact title. But there is a course in ATEC that has most of the information that our students on campus in CFM learn. So that's the course that we enroll them in because.
It's like a money and business course, yeah.
Right, because we want them to be able to learn that same information in their sophomore year, like the sophomores on campus, and not require them their junior year to have to take it. Because that sets the, part here too, because then we have too many students who might need that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Another thing that we might want to focus on too is getting the message out to parents that even though kids could work ahead, it's not necessarily healthy to. Like, for instance, there's a lot of wasted time in school. I mean, it just is. If there's passing time, there's, there's time when the teacher's collecting papers and settling down. Where at home, a student can maybe get a 40-minute class done in 20 minutes because they're working at their own pace and there's no waste of time.
That's right.
But if they were to bulk up on so many more classes or whatever, or if they're working six and a half hours a day on work, that might be too much, and they're going to end up burning themselves out, you know what I mean?
So one of the things that our remote liaisons did last week before the actual implementation of the courses that started today was to say to the students, you know, here's your schedule in terms of here are the courses that you're taking. Create a daily schedule for yourself and share that with me so that I can give you feedback about, are you utilizing your time at home and not just effective, but also efficient at home? Because it probably doesn't take the same amount of time to get done at home what it takes to get done at school.
I have a.
Yeah, any questions on teaching and learning for Dr. Lyon?
I have a question. So if the elementary teachers are providing the instruction, what is IXL providing us now to the remote learners?
That is providing additional supports. There are videos that will go with it, there are assignments that can go with it. So it is, it's meant to be supportive of what they're doing as a resource.
Anything else for Heather?
That resource specifically, IXL is the parent company. Education.com is a subsidiary of IXL. Our remote learners will have access to IXL and education.com. Our on-campus learners will have access still to education.com that the teachers might want to use with the students. It's on remote days, or there are assignments in there and whatnot. So it's a, it's a nice additional resource that we have for teachers and students.
So there.
Because our on-campus learners are getting direct instruction. The issue with education.com was that it wasn't providing the instruction that we are hooked for. But because our on-campus teachers are, education.com becomes a nice resource. Sorry.
No, I was just going to just, to Danielle's point, so that those teacher liaisons are implementing the IXL curriculum.
They're not teacher liaisons, they're actually.
I'm sorry, teacher, I'm, I didn't have, I had my, my verbiage wrong.
No, it's not really curriculum, it's assignments, it can be quizzes, it can be.
Okay.
Their curriculum actually is parallel to what students are getting on campus. And that's the nice part about who is teaching these things. Like Katie Reeves, for example, is a kindergarten teacher on campus, but she has all the remote kindergartners. So she's a part of the kindergarten team, has been, knows what they're learning. And so she can provide that instruction to our remote kindergartners that is as parallel as anything before.
So we had said that our fully remote kids were going to be asynchronous, but now are they synchronous too?
It's only synchronous for now. We always said that they were going to be with us for a period of time for check-ins and things like that. So in addition to the check-ins, we're doing the instruction.
So there's a set time that they need to log in?
Yes.
But that was always going to be.
Are we having any issues? I know we were worried about like people who might have their kids at daycare or whatever, might not have the opportunity.
There are a couple of people who have expressed concerns about that because they didn't understand that that would be a part of it. But for the most part, the remote, the elementary remote learners have, are with somebody who is helping them. And we did send out a survey early on to ask them, to ask the family, who is going to be with your child during the remote learning? What is their capacity with technology, you know, questions like that, so we could get a better understanding and work with them.
Okay. Any other questions? So this has not been without increased costs, unfortunately. And there have been some increased personnel costs, and I wanted to kind of give you an idea of where we're at right now in terms of costs that were not necessarily budgeted for. So Patty's going to hand out some materials and then look at some offsetting costs as well to make up that difference.
So if you look at the first column.
Well, let's get, let's let them get out first.
So, so what you're looking at, if you look at the first column where it's P, these are some of the additional costs, and these are not any of the costs that go into last year. So if you remember, last year we were closed for a few months, but we still ended up buying some PPE. We had to buy additional cleaning supplies, we delivered lunches, we did large bulk mailings to families, to homes. None of these costs are included in here. This is really this year's costs. One of the things that occurred is our unemployment went from about $45,000 a year to over $200,000 a year. So our substitute teachers this year were allowed to collect unemployment. While the district was not on the hook for the $600 extra that people got, we are on the hook for any benefits that people get. That is a significant change in what we're used to seeing. We did have to hire remote teachers to replace, we hired teachers some to replace the remote teachers and some to be remote teachers. So if we had to pay them out for the full year with benefits, we're looking at about nine and a half teachers for a total of $573,000 roughly. I factored in family, or single plans for all of these new teachers. Could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less depending on what these teachers' needs are. And this is assuming that we're working all year. We are providing our nurses with some additional time in each building. They felt that they really needed it, needed to be there a little bit earlier to check the cows in. But they still have kids that they see at the end of the day for a variety of things. So that just seemed very reasonable during this time. We spent about $190, well, we spent exactly $195,000 on PPE and additional cleaning supplies this year. That includes all the sanitizers that we're using at the buildings, that are spray guns, it includes the spray guns, some mop heads. It includes masks, all the kinds and sizes of masks. It includes face shields, desk shields for our elementary kids and some of our reading teachers. It includes hand sanitizer, just lots and lots of stuff. It includes, uh, hand sanitizer, just lots and lots of stuff. It also includes some filters because remember we talked about getting upgraded filters? And we know that in addition, we'll be needing three changes. So we ordered them now because the lead time on those has been incredible. I didn't put the charge in here for this, but we needed additional laptops for child nutrition so that they could run remote locations. And I, I just didn't get that in on time today. Apex and education.com was $31,995. We purchased some webcams for $4,000 for teachers to try out something to teach remotely. Funny hotspots for $18,000. Those are four-year licenses to support through OCs. We brought on four additional tech liaisons, one in each building. Um, those are $3,800. We're paying teachers to be tutors and the tutors are going to be content specific. So if I'm a remote learner and I have a liaison, um, my liaison at the secondary level might be a Spanish teacher. The, the support I need is in chemistry. I would not expect you to be able to help deliver chemistry, um, instruction or chemistry support. So we're trying to get tutors in every content area so that if a child is struggling at the secondary level, they have a tutor that will be able to provide instruction in that content.
So kind of like the, like what we would do in the three-to-five program?
Here is exactly what we're doing.
So is that money that we would have spent in the three-to-five program or?
Well, maybe or maybe not. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Can I see what we would have spent?
Yeah, but it, it is definitely, there's definitely some money there that would have been spent in three-to-five.
Um, we increased our Zoom place access. We, we added a different kind of license so that that was a bit of an increase. So our total spending at this point is one point, is a little over one million, almost one point one million. Um, the very bad news is in the midst of all of this, our spending is being withheld at 20%. And what is astounding to me is they're talking about withholding all of the aid. And that includes, um, building aid, which is money that's already been spent in Murrah. Right now, our first withholding was $108,000 and that was a high cost of aid. Um, we know that they're going to withhold 20% of UTK, which is $26,000. And just in our September eighth payment alone, we're looking at a $499,000 withholding. The problem with holding is they're saying they're withholding it and until the federal government comes up with more funds. If that doesn't happen, it will become more of a withholding.
It was permanent, yeah.
So this is what we're looking at. If you see the box here and that red amount, that is what we will be at a deficit of that was not budgeted as of Sep, the end of September. So we're looking at one point seven million dollar, um, reduction, both in additional spending and in a cut in revenue. If you look at the next line, if they continue to cut aid, so our state aid is 17.4, my, almost 17.5 million dollars. 20% of that is, is three and a half million. So we could be looking at another $2.8 million in lost revenue if they continue to withhold the 20% or if they continue, if they eventually cut it. That number is deeply concerning. I want to go over next door to the blue column. Um, and we're going to talk about some offsetting costs. So when they came out with the CARES Act money, if you remember in our budget, there's a line that's negative, which is the pandemic adjustment, it was $234,000. And then they gave us CARES Act money in the same exact amount. So basically they took away what they were going to give us. So we, it was net zero. It ended up not being net zero because some of that money we do have to share with our non-public kiddos. But we didn't budget all of it back in when we were budgeting because we really didn't know what they were doing at that point. So we will essentially have an extra $200,000 in those funds. So if you look at the S, the Esser and gear, um, we will be getting those funds from the state. That's the, that's the CARES Act money. We are not going to be spending all of our co-curricular activity money this year. We will not be running late buses and we won't be having all of our clubs this year. Fitness chaperones, the fitness room, we can't open anyway, um, or we couldn't open early on anyway. So we will not be providing chaperones for that area. Not running modified sports this year. That saves us a little bit of money. Um, interneurals, we also will not be running this year. We have some money in our athletic contractual codes. Um, so what we're looking at there is officials and then, um, just some additional costs. While our teams go to state and competitions, I think there's going to be some savings there. Um, in our transportation codes, you would think of less students on campus, we'd have less buses. And while we do have less buses at the elementary, we had to schedule more buses for, in other areas in OC. So that's going to be a break even, but we are going to be able to recoup some money in the sports trips and field trips. If you remember at the end of, at the end of the budget season, we talked.
Before, before Patty talks about that, I just, this is just an initial, there are many other codes that we will be looking at as we have to, and really looking at them carefully in terms of what we're spending, what's not being spent and those kinds of things. These are just some initial things that Patty and I kind of brainstormed where we're not spending money.
So if you remember last year, um, we ended, we ended the year with a couple of months of money that we didn't spend on transportation. And we took that money and we said, we're going to hold on to it because we had some, um, we had some lingering concerns because some of our transportation companies were suggesting that the governor said that we were paying all of our vendors and employees. And when we looked, walked back and looked at contracts, we really only paid for services provided. But while those things were pending, we took that money and we held it in encumbrance. Um, so that money still sits there and what we know now is that really no, they understand that, that that money, that they won't be paid that money. So we had held on to that. Um, so I, I'm comfortable putting 1.3 in at this point. I don't think we'll get the full aid that we budgeted, but I think we'll be close. So if you include that, that brings us to about 1.7. So up to the end of September, I think we're okay. The problem is that we've got to get gas September, so we'll, we'll see. Um, if you look under that as well, um, they are talking about reimbursing employers on the profits up to 50% of the unemployment that we paid out. Um, and they had this nifty form out that we're going to have to take a look at and dig into this week to see if we can recoup some of that. And then, you know, I did do my fee and application. It was lengthy and arduous. And then at one point they said they're not going to fund school reopenings. And then it got a lot of animosity and then they said, well, they're going to fund some of it, but not up to the, only up to the day it was, school opens and anything after school opens, they want to fund and I'm not sure what that means. But we did end up putting all of, um, all of the expenses in. So if we, 75% of that would get us $144,000, so.
And, and hopefully, um, that 633 will not be a withholding, will not be a cut, but simply will be distributed further down the road, um, which would obviously be helpful as well.
I feel like, um, you know, I just, I want you to know where it is and where it's going at this point.
Let's point out though, that that's a shell game for the state because if they're good to take this federal money and only just replace aid that we already had coming, we're not getting anything extra from the federal government.
Correct.
That is true.
Correct.
We're just hoping to maybe get our extra aid that we're due.
Correct.
That is exactly what we're hoping for. Yes.
But we were smart and we cut it out anyway, so. It actually would be a bonus for us, but you're absolutely correct, Patty. In terms of the way that the, the aid package was laid out, um, it was not.
Kind of like lottery money.
Correct.
Yes.
So by shell game, you mean being held hostage?
Yeah.
Well, it's not even just being held hostage, but he's holding our aid that we already had coming hostage based on federal funds coming through.
Yes.
So whenever federal funds come through, don't anybody think that schools are getting a bonus? Because all we're getting is the money that we're supposed to be getting.
Well, and, and, you know, as much as the governor has done a good job keeping our, he has traditionally been, um.
Well, he balances his budget on the back of education.
Correct. And he's, and he's traditionally held on to monies that were owed to districts. GEA being one of them, overpayment being one of them. That is unfortunate, but that's the way the state has played the game.
I do have a question. Can you explain the unemployment? Because we, I don't think we laid anybody off.
So we didn't lay anybody off. And, um, but what, when, when this started, what they said is it's, you know, anybody can apply, including substitutes, including people who had second jobs in the summer, who now couldn't work their second jobs, who are eligible. Um, so, you know, we had a lot of people who applied.
But why would that be on us? Wouldn't it be on the second job or on the?
The substitute teachers, it would be on us.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't be fully on us because they don't substitute. Really, it's based on their past, their past work.
Even if you're a second employer, you did, you do get a share of it. It's just how unemployment works.
And then the other thing is that like we, it's at York, but we had laid off. We're not getting hit for any of it against our rating because it's COVID-related.
But you're not on the profit. So, uh, we're not getting the 600. I mean.
Right.
It's, it's, none of it is that. It really is just that, that much money in, in substitutes and people who no longer work here, but they work here for parity here. So if you retire and work somewhere else and that laid off, we own some of that unemployment because it goes back for the year. So there's a couple of different situations, you know, we, we fought as many as we could. We are getting a little bit back, but at the end of the day, we're still looking at an extra $100,000 annual bill.
Crazy. It's crazy. Any questions on the funding and the expenses to this point?
You mentioned the FEMA money. I know that you have been really diligent in applying for all of that. And I saw the same notification that you did saying that they were now considering those to be, uh, increased operating costs and not, um, I hadn't seen the, the update. So it looks like they may be sending some of that money?
We haven't, we haven't technically sent out an update, but I, I work with, um, Tim Kelly and I've been working with Tim Kelly. He's our rep. And he basically said after all the bad publicity they got, now they're saying, well, maybe, you know, this is new for them too, by the way.
I understand.
You know, this is new for us. This is actually, if you think about the origins of FEMA, this is their first biologic disaster. Like they don't have anything else like this. So, um, they're trying to feel their way through it too and I'm sure it's been more costly than they anticipated. So now they're thinking that they will fund schools up to the point where school isn't sectioned originally. They said sanitization only, so you know, the, the cleaning supply, anything that PPE related, but not, you know, not the things that you use open school software, maybe not the desk shield or not the social distancing tape and those kinds of things.
So we, we haven't received any money from FEMA going back to.
No.
So that's still all on the table?
All on the table.
Right. Just wanted to confirm.
The cost of instruction, the mailing out of things, the delivery of lunches, um, they will not, the cost of, well, I don't know if I'm going to cover the related cost of lunches, but the cost of delivering lunches, I mean, the paperback and all that stuff, they will not cover.
Okay.
They won't cover anything that's a state mandate. Nobody's playing nice with them.
Anything else on, uh, school reopening or any other questions on?
I do want to say, I just want to give a shout out to our custodial staff and frankly, to all of our staff who are helping support them. Um, they said that they are just, they're so, they're so pleased with how everyone's willing to work together and help and really make it happen for the kids and for each other. They really work together as a team, so go team.
So I guess my question is, we barely have enough money to squeak back through the end of September. What are we going to do if we don't get any of this money back? When are we going to start making those decisions and being proactive about saving everybody?
We've probably got about another, uh, month and a half to see where, where this all plays out. Um, unfortunately, Betty.
I know everybody's essential for what we got going on.
Correct. We may, we may have to try to hold on until after, uh, November and see what the, um, you know, see what the election holds. That, that could, that, I believe the election will have a factor in terms of how this all plays out currently, right now.
So from a, I. So the, the other answer that, you know, like you're, I know what you're thinking is where, where's the money? We still have, this, this does not touch any fund balance. So I, I guess, and I should have made that more clear, this encumbrance from the prior year is not part of the fund balance. So we still have.
We still have about another 2 million that we could dip into.
Right.
Moving forward.
And so there's.
And we have, so that's, remember, we've got about a little, we've got over four mil, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We're not going to start talking, we're not going to already start talking about reserves.
No, no, but yeah, no, well, well, they're, but, but no, we have, there's the 2 million we've committed to this budget and then there's the unencumbered, which is a, close to another 2 million that we have sitting there, a little less.
We, we are also allowed to use repair reserve for this. So what, you know, we will have some money in repair reserve that we can use. Um, in addition, if we needed to liquidate other reserves, well, I would hate to do it. If we needed to do it, there's an emergency, we could. Um, the other thing you can do at the beginning of the year, which I, I don't like the idea of this because then there is the payback end of it. You could go into revenue anticipation though.
We also have, we have, we have almost 900,000 in tax soriori account that, you know, we, we don't know where that's going to, where that's going to play out with, uh, my, my hope beyond hope is that the, a judge will, whatever the change, whatever the assessment is, that they'll just say that's what it is moving forward.
Right. We just have to keep in mind that while we hope that these are all one-time expenses, we have no idea this could go on for a couple of years.
Betty, it will bank, it will bankrupt us. I mean, we will be down to.
Right.
It will be significant. It would bankrupt us.
And the state doesn't have any money. The state is deep in the red.
I mean. And I, I, I.
I know.
What you're watching play out, what you're watching play out in a district has a lot to do. We, we saw very quickly for us to do the remote model, we, we couldn't do it with the people. But we had to bring on some more people.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
There was just no two ways around it and we got too deep into it and it was just like, we got to do this. And, you know, we thought in our minds, where, you know, where the money's coming from, how we're going to pay for it, and we just had to do it. And unfortunately, if we had dilly-dallyed and not been decisive, we could be in a similar situation.
Oh no, we had to do it.
Yeah.
And Paul will tell you, this is one of the money times that I, he and I did not argue about money.
That's not true, but it was. We argued less because it was, it was like our backs were against the wall, you know?
And, I mean, when you look at the money that we get from state aid, the money that we're losing, we only get, you know, so much of our money from state aid. There are other districts that, that is the majority of how they fund their district. And when you start talking about these kind of cuts, I mean, it's going to bankrupt everybody.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Not new thing. They've got so much fund balance, they don't know what to do with it.
But, I mean, this is, this, this is not a problem that is unique to us at the moment, so.
Unfortunately not. It, it is, uh, it's a desperate, it's a desperate situation. And unfortunately, we are a bit caught in, there's a, there's, there is, there are politics being played here. There definitely are. You know, and it's a tough time right now because the stakes are very high on both sides, for both sides. So, you know, why the, why did, why could they not, they came, they came to a huge deal back in, what, March, April?
Oh, because the stock market changed.
The fence.
The stock market looks good now, so there's no.
Right, right. But you would think that they would come to a deal. Who knows? Who knows?
Well.
I don't understand it.
I, I do understand that, you know, we do need to think of the things that, you know, may have to go going forward, so. But is that through September?
In order for us to maintain this, we have to maintain the instruction.
Yeah.
You know, all of the, I mean, we're talking, we, sports, we're, we're saying right now, we're going to run five, Brad is, Brad is having his coaches meeting on Wednesday. We're having, we're running, going to run five sports, no modified, no, but that would all go, folks. That would.
That's what we're thinking.
That would all have to.
Like this co-curricular, we had said that we were going to delay them five weeks, but that's the number for the whole year, right?
No, that's, that's not the number for the whole year. That's, that's a huge number. It's a $200,000 number more.
So that's just what we're going to say by delaying?
Uh, no, that's just cutting a, we, we, we looked at some of the ones that we wouldn't be running.
Remember, we're not running late buses this year either. We're not running late classes this year either.
But that number's about 200,000. Yeah. I mean, there, there are, there are plenty of places that we could go to, but, if I have to maintain the instructional program and the hybrid model and the remote model, that is the most important thing.
Yep.
That's the most important thing.
And we will?
Yeah, we will. You know? I mean, you know, we're running sports. We're going to try to open up with these, these sports and, and, uh, you know, we're not going to be running transportation. We're not required to run transportation to sports. But, you know, you folks may hear some of that a little bit. You know, people are going to have to recognize that our school sports are going to become travel programs.
It is, it is absolutely amazing to me that we're running any sports and anyone that would complain would be.
Do you anticipate that there will be students because they have to provide their own transportation that will not participate?
I would anticipate that, yeah.
So you may have teams that you may not even be able to.
Be able to field, yeah.
Because you might not have enough students.
Correct.
Plus we have students that aren't good.
I know.
We have students that aren't going to play because they're concerned for their health. I mean, it's going to be interesting to see what we can field and what we, what we can't.
Which gets us to the COVID-19. I wanted just to update folks on that. You've seen a lot of emails. So on the front page of the website, you'll notice the flow chart has been, uh, this is the most recent update to it. So there are five scenarios on our flow chart. And of those five scenarios, uh, we currently have, um, three teachers and, uh, three students who are in scenario one. So they are in a quarantine for suspected to have had close contact with someone who tested positive. So they are currently in quarantine. Most of it, for most of them, their quarantine is at day seven or eight right now. Uh, because they all came about, um, on that, uh, Thursday prior to, uh, going out from school. So, no, I'm sorry. No, it came on that Sunday of Labor Day weekend. So, um, we have students there. We do have, um, three students who are in, students and staff tested positive or suspected of having COVID, um, with symptoms. So they're in column two and, uh, working with our nurses in, uh, Nyer County Health Department. But they need, they will, are required to have a proof of a negative COVID test to return back along with all of the other symptom resolutions. And then there are two other scenarios. One is, uh, they've tested positive but had no symptoms. They still, they still require the COVID test. We have two students, I believe, right now, uh, that the nurses are working with that are in scenario four. So students or staff or visitor exhibit one or more symptoms of COVID-19, but is not suspected of having COVID-19. Uh, working, they are still required to show proof of a negative COVID test by Nyer County rules. So we're working with those folks right now. Uh, of those, most of the families have been very good with our nurses and understand the requirement and are willing to very much do that. I believe, uh, the nurses have only had maybe one issue with a family saying that that's just not necessary. But that's the rules that we're playing under right now. And we do have one teacher who, uh, unfortunately, due to a family situation, had to travel to a, a, uh, a state that is under, um, the, uh, what's it, Patty, the? The travel advisory. So that, that teacher is in quarantine, uh, upon the return, and we're waiting for that quarantine to end.
So I have a question about those. So considering the fact that we can't really afford to have anybody being paid that isn't doing meaningful full-time work, are we allowed to have these quarantined people who aren't sick, perhaps performing?
We do. We have one currently right now. Yeah.
So what if they can very well, so that, you know, the teacher question actually says, I could do this for my child. I won't really retire. You know, he puts lots of that. Um, so he is, so we, you know, we still have to have a stop in the room because there's kids.
Obviously, right.
Um, but he's actually.
Or if you can't teach your class, could they at least maybe do some of this grading or this tutoring or?
Um, this particular teacher isn't a very difficult, um, has had, it's difficult to.
Okay, I'm just saying in the future, not necessarily.
Yes.
Teachers who are, we are going to.
We're a work with them.
And the other thing I, I was quite surprised because we always talk about people who are quarantined or tested positive. So far, no one who is tested positive is actually back on campus.
Right. That's important to recognize.
I had that conversation with my son right before I left to come here. Did you know that, you know, that, and, you know, obviously that's been out in Paul's email and.
If you look at our dashboard, we have nobody on our dashboard because our dashboard looks zero, all zeros, because we have not anybody on campus.
But that's important to reassure people at this point. Because I'm saying like he asked because it was get, you know, students were, I guess, discussing that. So.
Uh, I just want to update you on that. You saw the draft letter that will go out if we do have a case that is, uh, that erupts on campus. Um, it won't necessarily shut the school district down. Um, but we'll be working with those students and families that may have been in close contact, working with the Nyer County Health Department. Okay?
And it, it may happen. It is in our community. So just know that we are prepared.
We almost, it almost happened. And I think that, uh, kind of summarizes, um, kind of where we're at right now, as of five days into this.
Anyone have any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, board and district goals. In the short amount of time that you had to look these over this afternoon, um, did everyone have a chance to review or?
Well, you have some more time.
You do, because we're going to, um, we're just going to look at them, the draft tonight, and then we'll look at, um, actually adopting them at the next meeting. So it'll be a couple of weeks. So, I know, um, Paul said earlier that he wanted to get the district goals out to the administrators, have them take a look and have some feedback and then have an opportunity for everyone to actually read them over. And this just all came straight from the retreat and just taking the notes that Marissa took and putting them in the right, I put them in the right format and kind of wordsmithed them. So, um, added them as to action items, the timeline and the success indicators. Um, and as I said, I apologize for not having them done. I honestly totally forgot that I hadn't had that done. So.
So, what, if you have any initial questions you wanted to, but what I would ask that you do is, so they'll, they'll be shared as a Google Doc, you know, please, um, between now and, um, that Wednesday before our, uh, our board meeting, um, which will be on the 28th. Uh, so that would be the, um, 25th. Uh, if, if you want to make any comments or anything, add or, or, or please use the Google Doc comments. Okay?
Yep. Should we, um, I don't see them, they intended, do we need to decide whether we're going to do this, uh?
Yeah, I brought that up as well. Actually, we also needed to talk about facilities because Ann has brought up that she is not able to make those facility meetings. And we said we were going to mention it last time and we got busy. Okay, perfect.
Changing the dates of the meetings to accommodate.
All right, as everything should accommodate. All right. Okay, that's problem solved. Check. Um, and then also, um, we wanted to talk about, uh, the school boards convention, which is virtual. Um, just how we want that to look. Did everyone have a chance to look at it at all online as to what they've, they've put out? Um, basically, they're going to run all the educational sessions that we would always go to. Um, but it will be, you know, basically, you know, kind of as in our leisure a little bit more. Pardon?
Are they synchronous or asynchronous?
That's a good, I think, I, I thought they were asynchronous. But I'm not sure if all of them are. So, but the idea is, do we, um, you know, do we want to, it's, we're still interested in doing that and kind of taking that as like a professional development. Um, a lot of the top, you know, if you had a chance to look at the topics and, um, if we, if we do get our registration in, I think, did you say there's like a bag or something?
I think that, um, if we're going to send the money and do it, I think that it'd be really easy for us to not really take a really good advantage of it unless we maybe had a, a separate meeting, maybe an extra work session that we actually.
Yeah.
Did it, did some of it, or at least just.
That was going to be one of my.
Like circles what we're going to do and spread it out.
So before, I mean, registration, how long is registration going?
For early bird, it's pretty soon. I think early bird's like the 20th or something.
Then let's take a look at the, the content, um, of the sessions, the availability of looking at them, you know, who, who will be available to do them and to report out. And it, you know, it might be where in years past, we would, you know, a majority of us would go, maybe just a couple of us can take, you know, on the sessions and bring that information back. So before, um, the next meeting or the, the deadline, let's take a look at how we want to approach it. And then what do we want to do with that information? Like, do we want to report out at the next work session? Like what will, what will be the value in, in those sessions? And I know they, they significantly reduce the cost of just even the registration. So from years past.
Are we allowed to have a Zoom, a separate Zoom meeting just to discuss convention that wouldn't be considered a public meeting?
We could have another work session and do it through Zoom, but it would have to be.
What do you make? Yeah.
I just wondered if we all went back and looked at the offerings and then we all just got together on a Zoom real quick and kind of discussed it.
Okay. Or, I mean, we could just, I'm sure.
Because if we wait for two weeks for our next meeting, it's going to be past the deadline for early bird registration. It's a significant discount.
Yeah. What was the deadline?
I think that we pass the deadline because it, it says the 13th, but I could call them and say, hey, we missed our next meeting.
Cause I thought that I.
All right, I did too. All right. Well, let's, um, let's go back and take a look at that and by, have it by the end of the week. Um, you know, send, even if everybody just emails your thoughts on how to approach it. We can get it together and see how many to register and how we want to go forward with it. Do you have anything to add in the convention?
I know, uh, you know, if, if the board decides that you want to involve with it and, uh, if the sessions look good, I'm glad to, uh, to be a part of it with you.
Good.
It's just, you know, there's, there's a lot.
There's a lot. I know. That's, that's part of it. Even going through the.
I, I, I want, I want the board to look at it and, and let's take a look at the courses and
There's a lot of.
breakouts and see what's.
Even like the communication one, I know they're really focusing on reopening and on the pandemic.
A lot of ones sounded good this year too.
And, I mean, very focused on what we're all dealing with right now. So.
But I like Betty's idea that we would commit to a session to do it so that we're not, you know, maybe two people watch them together and I, it's always interesting to do it that way, you know?
Yeah.
All right.
If we did it together, we only have to register for one.
I know, that's what I'm, I'm not sure.
Like why couldn't we do it, like if there was three people interested in one particular strand, why couldn't we do it here and project it on the space? I don't know.
I don't know. I don't see why you couldn't have two rooms going. You could have here and the alumni room and, or you could have closed one of these off and, and we could just.
I imagine when you registered, it's not going to give you a login and password. And if we just bought a couple of them, we could probably just share them and like do whatever.
Right, but, yeah.
I don't see how.
On the other hand, they really kind of need to be supported.
I don't think you could use the login twice. Do you know what I mean?
No, but if you had, if you, if you were projecting, I don't know how they would know you weren't projecting.
You couldn't. But if I think if you were individually to be at home, you couldn't probably use the same password at the same time.
But I think that they also reduced the price because it's virtual and the organization, that's their major fundraiser for the year, and we should support that. And I don't think we should.
Right. I think it's a reduced price. Yeah.
Why don't we just, why don't you talk, why don't we buy three?
Just do three.
Why don't we buy three? And then we could break down and, or do you think we should, are you saying that you, you think we should support them more?
They're not spending money on hotels and travel and I think the, the, at least the board members, I don't think necessarily you need to.
No, I think we can, Patty and I and Heather, if we want to catch a session, we could sit in with any of you guys who are taking it.
I think the other thing is, don't you get credit for it, right?
You do get credit towards your, your achievement.
And we have to ask if everybody's interested in doing that. Like, right, commitment and stuff, and then practice, do whatever you want.
Well, why don't you see, what's the cost of seven, what's the cost of seven passwords, you know?
Especially for the new, new board members, it's just a lot of really good stuff. But we could help steer you towards the really good stuff too, if we had a little time to talk about it.
Well, that's why if we did it, at least, you might have a window to, you might have a window to view the stuff, but we could at least do one night together.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. And, and also, I mean, this is money that we had budgeted and obviously will, there'll be a great savings from what we budgeted to what we can do.
That's correct.
Yeah, but if we, you're right. If we can agree on a few that we all want to see, maybe we can get a couple together in this room, a couple together in that room, one evening, do them together.
It's 208 by a member. So.
And the early birds ended yesterday.
Yeah, maybe it's 260. But I could, you know, if I called them tomorrow and said, hey, we missed out, we just think. I, I don't know that a lot of districts are doing it because.
Does he plan to get them?
Yeah. Sometimes.
Right.
Well, 1,500 or 1,600 dollars was certainly a lot cheaper than, you know, even three month, three or four people going to New York City, you know, so.
Right.
For sure.
And we don't have cake anymore, so.
No.
Yeah, what about that?
Do we have cupcakes?
It's 24 nights that I won't be having dinner. Some of it synchronous? Yeah, we kind of dig into it.
Schedule. Yeah, so they're still going to be like, we're going to have to dedicate that time.
I was just going to say that in years past, I mean, there were only certain, there were only a certain amount of sessions that you could get into. And sometimes you couldn't even get into it. I mean, look at the, there's been years that we got locked out as you're like running to get into the room. But you could always get into the other and get all of the documents and.
Get the PDFs and stuff.
Yeah, and all of that information from them. So I'm sure that that's all still, I'm pretty sure that's all going to still be available. So, but.
Well, maybe while they're doing the synchronous, they'll also change it much later.
Yeah, perhaps. And by synchronous, I'm guessing that they're going to be recorded. So, yeah. Unless they're just people zooming in, but I, I don't know. We'll get that information and get it out to everybody and make that decision. Okay. All right. Um, was there anything more on the, the goals or any of those topics? All right, then let's go ahead. I'd like to move to approve NA1, approval of the corrective action plan for the internal audit report. If I may have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA2, approval of the acceptance of the internal audit report. If I may have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? So carried. Like to move to approve NA3, approval of the YMCA Buffalo Niagara pre-K and after-school contract. If I may have a second. Um, quick discussion. Um, Charlotte did catch that there was a typo for the year and you were going to strike that and correct it before we approved it. Yeah. Just, it had the, the. She had 2019 instead of 2020. It was within the body of the contract.
Under the terms, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was September, uh, 2019.
So is that something you already amended, Patty, or you need to do that now? Okay.
All right.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes. Any opposed? So carried. And I would like to move to approve the consent agenda for personnel. If I may have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? So carried. All right, and I think that was it.
Very good.
I would like to move to adjourn. If I may have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.